Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Carpentry of Valley Chambers Candidate Forum. And we're so happy you could be here. There's a few little house rules I just wanted to familiarize you with. I'm Pat Kissler, so that, just so you know, I have a name card also. Each candidate has a name card. This is Tom Legere. Tom Legere is the Chair of the Board of the Chamber, and he will be asking the questions this time. And I believe I have my CEO, Linda. Linda Lang is here. Thank you, Linda, for coming. And do we have any other board members? Oh, there is Rich. Hi, Rich. Rich Rozell from the State Parks. So that's cool. All right, here we go. This is just going to be relaxed. This is not an intense question and answer period. Our candidates were kind enough to come. They had their questions in advance. They are prepared. We are going to stop in time. If you have a burning question you want to ask a candidate, you will have time to do that personally. So we're going to go ahead and start, and we'll let it, everybody kick off. We're going to start with Greg. The first round down the line will be a 30-second commercial for each one. You may stand, or you may speak into the, I guess speaking to the mic is the best. So take it away, Greg.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here. Thank you all for coming. I'm Gregory Ganderud. I'm running for Carpentry of City Council. I have lived and worked in Carpentry for 25 years. I've owned my own accounting practice here for about 20 years. I've served previously on the Carpentry of City Council from 2002 through 2006. In 2005, I was appointed by the Governor to the State of California's Recreational Trails Committee. I volunteered here in Carpentry on everything from Creeks Committee to Friends of the Library. I'm treasurer of the Anza Trail Foundation right now. So I love Carpentry. I love living here. We have a wonderful, small town, and we need to work very hard to keep it that way.
My name is Wade Nemura. I'm also running for City Council. I've been a resident here since 1977. I'm a landscape contractor, brought my family up here, raised a family. I have my grandchildren now in Carpentry also. Spent a lot of time here in Carpentry. Enjoy volunteering, seeing the benefits. It's a beautiful city. Glad I'm here. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. My name is Tom Perry. I also have raised four children here in Carpentry. I've been a citizen, or I guess you could say citizen. I've been a member of the Carpentry Valley since 1962. I was the owner of Sunburst Printers and the Thoggraphers. It's interesting what a printer does. He has an opportunity to meet businessmen right from the get-go. The businessman goes in, starts a business. He comes to a printer, gets his cards. He orders his sales books. So I believe I have a great knowledge in business, and I'm going to use that.
Kathleen Reddington. I'm the incumbent, running for reelection to the Carpentry of City Council. And I was hoping that we'd give the Emily Post five minutes so that the late arrivals could have their due. But, oh, well, we started on time. So thank you all for coming. It's great to see you all in the audience. I have served Carpentry and enjoyed it. I do believe that Carpentry is a wonderful, great place to live. I've raised my daughter here from the age of four. I've lived here for almost 15 years. I was on the Planning Commission. I'm a published journalist, a writer, very, very strong environmentalist, an athlete. Ride bikes and walk and run and do all those wonderful things. Swim, ocean swim and pool swim. And enjoy living in Carpentry because it gives me the opportunity to do that. My hope is that for generations, my children and my children's children will have the opportunity to do that also. And that's one of the reasons that I ran for office in the first place, and it's the reason that I'm back here, because I enjoy this community and I like to keep it, I'd like to keep it to the best, for the best, of future generations. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Fred Shaw, and thank you all for coming tonight. I have a bachelor's degree in history and a minor in political science from Cal State Northridge. After 36 years of working with the U.S. Postal Service, including three in the United States Navy, I retired with my family here in Carpentry in 1998. We live in Silver Sands Mobile Home Park. If I'm not volunteering somewhere in town, I'm either swimming or playing basketball with friends locally, or else you can just find me at home enjoying the sounds of the ocean, the train, or just the tranquility of the wetlands right next door to me. I really love living in our little beach town.
Thanks, Fred.
Okay, we are ready to begin, sir.
Right. And what we'll do is I'm going to start with the first question with Mr. Ganderud. And as you said, we've got two minutes for each one of these, and then we'll be able, and I'm going to come down with the second question. We'll start with Wade and kind of move through that way. And so, Mr. Ganderud, if you would like to start with the first question. Given the varied business and residential interests in Carpentry, what experience do you bring to successfully fill a City Council seat?
Ah, well, I'm in the business of business as an accountant, owning my own small business here in Carpentry. I prepare income tax returns, and we provide bookkeeping and payroll services for hundreds of individuals and local businesses. Also, I administer a few million dollars' worth of trust assets. I graduated with honors from University of Southern California with an emphasis in financial management, so I have quite a depth of business background. You know, I think people often ask, you know, where does economic vitality come from? What can we do to create a more vital local economy? And I think it's important to remember that wealth starts with dreams. We have entrepreneurs in the community who see various opportunities, and it's important for us as a community to empower the entrepreneurs that are here, because when they're able to take the available resources and create innovative new stores, mom-and-pop businesses, maybe a high-tech business utilizing new technologies, I think we all win as a community. So I think we need to be careful in terms of local government not to turn those dreams into a nightmare. And sometimes, small businesses struggle in Carpentry to get through the permitting process. I think we have to be mindful of that, and I think we can do more to encourage our local small businesses.
Didn't even have to do this. Good job.
Very good. I try to keep it brief.
And so, would this be helpful for the audience for me to repeat that same question, or can we just go to Wade since it's?
Audience, your decision. You remember the question? We're good with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
There's Amanda takes charge. I like that.
Thank you.
Same question. Experience-wise, I came here in 1970 when I was in high school, actually a senior in high school, and I started working at one of the local nurseries. At that time, I had the fortune of coming into town, catching my lunch, taking little breaks here and there, but I fell in love with Carpentry. I'm born and raised in Santa Barbara, and one thing I found is that, as I worked here, the more I got involved locally and found that out, I vowed that I wanted to come back and live in Carpentry to make this my full-time, full-time life. And that's what I did. In 1977, I graduated from Cal Poly Sandless Abyssal and Horticulture, started a landscape contracting business here in Carpentry. I was very fortunate. We were able to purchase a house here, never looked back, never looked at another place I wanted to live. This place is beautiful. As far as experience, I've had 20 years of experience working on the Architecture Review Board. I'm a member of that board. I've been a continuous member since, well, for the full 20 years. That is an appointed position by City Council, and I was very fortunate to be able to have that run. Enjoyed every minute of it. One thing that gave me a lot of experience on that was the ability, or the ability actually to review each and every house that came forward, all these projects that came up. And along with that, we actually got to set and take a look at guidelines, guidelines that would affect the aesthetics of each and every neighborhood, each and every community. As the developments came through in those 20 years' time, I got to see the evolution, the changes. And this is not to pat anybody on the back, but currently, the city staff that we have in place has done an outstanding job. They keep everything in line. They do an excellent job of reviews for us in keeping us up to speed. One other, I would say, component I've had as far as experience working with governments is that I've had the opportunity through Rotary International to serve as a project negotiator. And this is internationally. I've had the ability and privilege of serving multiple countries, multiple areas. I've served as this negotiator, and taking into consideration the different cultures, the different nationalities, economic levels, and also religions is one of the challenges, I think, that I was faced on a day-to-day basis. And finding consensus in each and every one of those was one thing that I feel I could bring to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Tom?
Yeah. Well, I guess I could fall back on my business experience here in Carpentry. Back in the '70s, Ernie Wolbrandt, Ruben Organista, Mike Earl spent a lot of time in my print shop, almost a home from home. And I have a vast experience in the city of Carpentry from the onset, from about 1965. I was politically involved with the group that organized the city. We worked out of Sunburst Printing. Everybody was in the office. We discussed things that came down and happened in Carpentry. And I have a lot of early knowledge as to what was supposed to happen in Carpentry and what has happened in Carpentry. And I feel like I'd make a good council member because I know the direction I want to see Carpentry go in. We do still have somewhat of a small-town charm, but that's going to be rudely interrupted on all the citizens of Carpentry when they see the size of the freeway project that's going to come through the Carpentry Valley. Carp is very important to me. It's very important to my children. They still live here. I'm trying to protect things in the future that are important to the small-town atmosphere, which I believe is really not lost, but it's on the verge of going out the window. So I'm here to protect Carpentry as I know it. I also would like to say, let's see, let me have a second.
You've got 30 seconds.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. Let's wrap it at that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Reddington?
As a former councilperson or a councilperson, standing councilperson for years, I bring the experience of serving the community as a City Council member for the past four years. As a council member, we have had many accomplishments. We defeated the Paradon Initiative. We banned single-use bags. We established three citizens committees. And if there's one thing that most of the people know about me is, call me up, I'll call you back. Need something to get done? We'll get it done. I'll do my best. Part of what I really, really think the responsibility of a good leader is, is to bring the community into the process in a very active way. And that's something that I think that if we and when we do that, we have a community that we all care about and care for, and the things that happen in that community are directly related to what we need and we would like to see. The three citizens committees that I established were the Design Review Team with the councils, with my council, or with the council, to manage the 101 expansion. And that was a very good, that's a very good team, because we formed that to make sure the size, scale, and aesthetics of the bridges and the on-ramps match Carpentry and keep our small-town character, which we all obviously here adore. We all formed, we also formed the Integrated Pest Management Team to oversee the use of toxic pesticides and chemicals in our parks and public lands. We formed the Neighborhood Preservation Committee to improve communications between the city and local residents. All total on all these committees, that's, I think, between 30 and 40 people that we got involved in local government over the last four years while I've been on the council. I consider that quite a large accomplishment. The council also acquired the Seaside Building and public parklands while I've been in office. With the help of People Self-Help Housing, we obtained grants and funding to construct, and you can see it as you drive around the city, 77 new low-income worker housing. That was one of the promises that I made four years ago, and with the council's help, we attained that. I think that's very important. Those 77 low-income worker housing units will be at Delia Court and Casa de Las Flores, the former camper park. The council kept Carpentry financially solvent, doing everything that we could to keep the $6.8 million that we have in reserve, while also keeping the city at a very, how can I say, very good pace. The City Council sponsored with the Chamber first Friday, and I'm very proud of that. Those celebrations to encourage our residents and visitors to shop local have been very successful. And recently, the council, in the eco way of things, voted to replace our vehicles with hybrids. And those are the kinds of things that I hope to continue to do for the next four years, working with the people, with the committees, bringing as many people into the government process and listening to those who have needs and desires with the city government. Thank you.
On the button.
Yep.
Okay.
Fred?
Okay. Since moving here, I've worked with most organizations in towns, taking a leadership role in many of them. I've worked extensively on chamber and rotary events. When the city first started the Community Emergency Response Team, I was in the first group to complete that course. And I subsequently helped form the Silver Sands Emergency Response Team where I live. Along with Chris McGuire, former mayor's Donna Jordan, and Dick Weinberg, and Dr. David Beamer, I helped develop the Carpentry of Volunteer Host Program in 2006, and I'm still the Sunday Coordinator of that. I also became a member of the Carpentry of Seal Watch in 2009, and I'm the Monday Coordinator of that particular group. With Carpentry a Beautiful, I've picked up litter throughout the town and also worked on the Home and Garden Tour throughout the years. Over all these years, I've also volunteered at the Avocado Festival, Rods and Roses, the Carpentry Triathlon, the Orchard Ocean Run, the Hospice Tree Lighting, and pretty much every event that goes on in town. I guess I'm just a volunteering nut. I currently serve on the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Board. One thing, though, these years of volunteering alongside carpentarians with many differing points of view have allowed me to understand what they want for our town. I think this makes me uniquely qualified to represent our residents and our businesses on our City Council.
Very good. Thank you, Fred. Now, we're going to go to the second question, and I'm going to start with Wade, but let me read the question. Does the city of Carpentry support local business growth? If yes, how? And if not, what ideas can you bring to the City Council to make improvements in this area? Wade?
Thank you. It's my opinion that the city has done an outstanding job of bringing in and supporting local business. Of course, it could be better. So to start with, first of all, I'd like to, I would say, inform you of some of the information that I've had in the past. To start with, I know for a fact that City Council, or the city, works diligently to try and keep all of the vacancies filled. And the way they do that, they have staff that actually identify specific needs areas where vacancies have been, I would say, ongoing or long-term. They try and find or seek partners, somebody in that business area that would have the need for those specifics. That's one way that the city helps. Another way is through the process of development. I've seen in the past a number of projects come forward. Those would include Rite Aid, Vons, S&amp;S Seeds, and also Albertsons. Each and every one of these projects that was brought forward came with a pretty extensive staff report suggesting areas, concerns that the staff would have, concerns that potentially would affect the community, and each and every one of those is addressed. When we see it at the Architecture Review Board level, we address some of these issues, but more of it goes into Planning Commission and then also then to City Council. This helps. This information component makes a big difference on how businesses could come forward and fit within a community. Without that in place and without this working together, it would be near impossible. What I also see in the growth of local businesses is the ability of, thank you, of the Chamber to become involved with part of that. The city should be part of it, and I believe the Chamber should also play an integral part, working together to make sure that these businesses stay together, stay informed, and stay able to work with the public.
Very good. Thank you, Wade. Tom?
Would you repeat the question for me, please?
Absolutely. Does the city of Carpentry support local business growth? If yes, how? If not, what ideas can you bring to the City Council to make improvements in this area?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I was the printer for the city of Carpentry for 17 years, and I know full fact that not only just the city staff, but almost all the businesses in Carpentry try to support local businesses. Can it be improved? Yes.
Do you have any suggestions of how that could happen?
No, I do not at this moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Kathleen?
Yes. The council and the city of Carpentry support local business growth. The council lowered development impact fees to foster economic growth. We upgraded our technology to make our city website more inviting. When you look at improving business, it's important to encourage businesses that make sense and are compatible with our small-town beach setting. There needs to be a balance here. Business must respect our community's standards and vision. We have to be careful. Do we want a slaughterhouse in Carpentry? A Walmart? The answer is no. Do we need to encourage oil drilling? That measure was on the ballot two years ago. While I enthusiastically support the Chamber on most issues, the Chamber voted to support Measure J. Measure J not only allowed oil drilling, but undercut our city's existing laws that protected the city and our environment. The voters disagreed with Measure J in the Chamber by a margin of 71 to 29. This is still an important issue, and I brought it up in the council because Vinoco has not withdrawn the Paradon application. It's my understanding that at least one candidate in this election openly supported Measure J, while another candidate stated to the Independent Newspaper that he had no opinion. I worked on the campaign to defeat Measure J. This issue is important, and it may come up again. I voted no on Measure J. The ballot is secret, and other candidates have no obligation, but I think the community has the right to know. Transparency is important in this election, so I challenge my candidates, the candidates, to reveal their vote on Measure J, because the issue of oil drilling is not going away, and Paradon may very well become part of the council's agenda again. The important issue is what kind of business do we support here in Carpentry? And rather than supporting all of business growth, we need to be selective. I hope the other candidates agree. Carpentarians need to know what side of oil are you on before they go to the polls.
Thank you, Kathleen. Fred?
Well, I believe our city, I believe our city does support local business growth. Our city manager is an ex parte member of the Carpentry of Chamber Board, and that brings city government input into the Chamber during their discussions. And it also keeps the line of communication open between the city and the business community, which is extremely important in a small town. Our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Silk, works with the Chamber to facilitate local business. And as Kathleen mentioned, it is true, the development impact fees have been lowered, which was a reflection of the downturn in the economy, so the city is responsive to that particular part of the business plan. However, I believe that working with the Chamber, City Council can promote Carpentry to business and industry at regional levels, often going to different meetings. Council members and also other staff members could promote, possibly promote Carpentry a little bit better than they are now, which would only bring more business to us. I believe we can make Carpentry a car-free destination along the entire Amtrak corridor, clear from Seattle all the way down to San Diego and even inland a ways. Further, with the proximity of UCSB, which is now ranked in the top 20 universities in science and technology, we should be able to market our industrial area to start up tech, science, and green businesses to grow our economy, which obviously is going to be good not only for our fiscal stability, but for the community as a whole.
Good. Thank you, Fred. Okay, now, we're moving to the third question.
Yeah, I think it's my turn for that.
Oh, you get a turn?
Yeah.
Okay.
We started with Wade.
Yeah, I know. Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, so as far as the local business growth, you know, I think the city of Carpentry tries very hard to support local business growth, and I think to a large extent, we do a very good job. I've been an active member of the Chamber of Commerce as well, and when I was on the council from 2002 through 2006, I did vote to support the host program, which I think has been a great thing. We work very hard to keep up the infrastructure of Carpentry. I think it's really important to have good, quality roads and sidewalks. We've put in a number of hiking trails throughout the city. We've done a lot of things to make Carpentry attractive as a tourist destination, and that's an important part of our local economy, along with agriculture and all the various industries in Carpentry. But I think, you know, sometimes we've done things a little too hastily. I like the reusable bags. I have a trunk full of reusable bags. When I go to the grocery store, that's what I use here in Carpentry to shop. But I think it was rushed through a little hurriedly. You know, we ended up getting sued by the restaurant industry, and a lot of people have been left with the feeling that their rights have been taken away, they're being forced to do something. And I think, you know, people tend to resent being forced to do something. So I like to always strive to do things in a way that's voluntary and cooperative and encourage people to do the right thing rather than forcing them to do things. So I think we need to be a little bit more careful, because sometimes we do earn a reputation of being a little unfriendly to business. Also, I want to say that I think education is so very important, and I think when we're talking about, you know, what's good for the city and what's good for business, good for all of us, I think we have to emphasize education, because our kids are our future. And I think that we need to create more creative partnerships between the business community and our schools and our City Council, create more meaningful internships for the kids, and have a more vital local economy so that we have more resources to put back into our community.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Now, because this is a topic that Tom is interested in, we'll start with Tom here. With the upcoming Caltrans work on the Linden and Casitas Pass Highway, 101 bridges and over crossings in Carpentry, what ideas do you have to help local businesses continue to stay open and thrive during the lengthy construction period?
That is a good question. I also was an alternate on the Design Review Team with the bridge project here and the construction that's going on. And Caltrans mentioned to me that they had just completed five bridges in Placerville, California. And Placerville, California is much a small town as Carpentry. Placerville is on the 50, in between Sacramento and Tahoe, and it used, 50 used to be just a two-lane road running through. And in the last 20 years, they have gotten themselves a super freeway that runs through town. And in fact, it was almost 11 years where you didn't even know Placerville was there. So I think Carpentry needs to be really careful about how we advertise on the freeway an easy access into town. I know the ocean's going to always draw the people to Carpentry, no matter what. Because of our beaches, they'll find us. But we've got to make it easy for the people to come in and out of town. So something needs to be posted out on the road, maybe several miles in advance, a notice in advance, because you could not find Placerville for 11 years. And that street shut, closed down. The Main Street went dead. Businesses were out. And because I was on the Design Review Team, and Caltrans had just completed their 15-year project in Placerville, my wife Lori and I traveled to Placerville to take a look at the bridges, to inspect, to see what they had done with the bridges. And Placerville itself was just so successful. They opened up a gateway to Placerville. They brought the bridges into Placerville. The traffic flows north and south through Placerville. And all along Main Street, it was, the corridor was thriving. So I think we could look at Placerville and learn something from them.
Okay. Good. Kathleen?
Are we started? Okay. First of all, and I'm kind of half joking, but half not, I've, as part of my campaign stumping, I've been saying that I'd love to bring the Bathing Beauty back to Carpentry, who used to, as all my friends who are surfers tell me, she used to sit and welcome visitors. Perhaps that's an idea that might, how can I say, attract eyes as they're going through the freeway congestion to come to Carpentry. There's the beautiful 40-something or whatever. She was from the 40s and the 50s, as I understand. I've never seen her, but I'm looking forward to it. So let me put out a hunt-and-fetch here and say, if anyone knows where the Bathing Beauty sign went, please, please get it back to City Council so we can consider it in the future as our way of marking Carpentry during all this freeway congestion and construction. Anyway, the current City Council, myself included, supports working with Caltrans to make sure Carpentry stays economically healthy and our businesses and services can access local roadways with the least amount of hassle and congestion. That just makes sense. Establishing a commuter rail that brings people to their jobs in Carpentry and tourists to enjoy our small town is one solution. Expanding shuttle service to the south end of town is another solution for the congestion. The City Council established a Design Review Team to carefully assess the size and scale of the proposed bridges, the Casitas Pass Bridge and the Linden Bridge. The Linden Bridge has been taken from three to five, or from five to three lanes, excuse me, and with pedestrian walkways and bike paths on both sides. Now, we need to look
sides. Now, we need to look closely at the Casitas Pass Bridge. We need to see, does that bridge fit our small town? Right now, it's proposed at five lanes. The community, the council will be considering, the design review team, how that bridge aesthetically and size and scale fits into Carpinteria. Perhaps we may form, as we're looking at this congestion, which I would be very interested in doing, forming another citizens committee that looks at the congestion and works with Caltrans, perhaps from the design committee, and finds ways that we can alleviate and lessen the traffic congestion during the construction of the freeway. One of the stipulations that I think should be put forward could be to finish one bridge before beginning on another. I lived down south for a long time, and I remember what was very, very difficult in all the construction was, was when everything was disrupted. It's very difficult to find your way in all that confusion. So if we do it segmented, and rather than doing it all at once, obviously, that makes sense. So I think that Carpinteria can get through this congestion. We just have to look at, also, part of the design review team, and I realize I don't have much time, was to look at the aesthetics, so that when people do drive through Carpinteria, whether it's Chumash Designs or public art, hey, I'm in this wonderful little beach town. Let's pull over and see what's happening, because the freeway looks so cool underneath in the bridges. Thank you.
Well, first off, we have to realize that whether we like it or not, Caltrans is with us for about fifteen more years. So I think it's most important that we keep the lines of communication open between city staff and city council and Caltrans. There are simple remedies that we can do, things like on- and off-ramp closures that mitigate difficulties for visitors who want to enjoy Carpinteria. I think that's a good first step between the city and Caltrans. Secondly, welcoming signage, as Tom mentioned, along the construction corridor. That would assure travelers that our unique beach town and all the special things that we have here is still here and open for business as usual, so they can just come in. Also, in the same vein, by using the off-ramps at Baylord and Carpinteria Avenue, the congestion at Linden and Casitas Pass can be avoided. And using signage, we can alert travelers that that's the case, that there's ways to get in without having to deal with the construction on those two bridges. I think another thing that we can do as a council is do more outreach to areas along the Amtrak corridor, because that way, we could draw travelers into our town to enjoy our town, spend money, and then leave, and they don't need their cars to do it, which of course is good for our business and also good for our infrastructure. Working with MTD, I think we could also expand our shuttle service to make our downtown core more accessible, not just to local residents and businesses in our industrial area, but also to visitors throughout the community, so they can access all of our hotels and other places of interest in town.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Greg?
Yes. Well, I met with the Public Works Director and looked at the design of the overpass, and initially, Caltrans was wanting five lanes. Some people are talking about three lanes. We need to do something that's going to work, you know, for the next hundred years. I think we probably can get by with four lanes, and I think the Public Works Director agrees with that. But I'd like to see as much landscaping as possible on the bridge. I think we need to make room for pedestrians, bicyclists. We need to make sure that everybody's accommodated, and that we're really planning for the future on this. Of course, we need to have adequate signage at all the on-ramps and off-ramps and things, directing people around the construction so they can find our businesses and other key places in Carpinteria. But we also can use some technology. We can put things on the scroll for people. We can have a phone number that people can call to get up-to-date information on what the latest closures are going to be. We can put things on the internet, Facebook, Twitter. We can make all those things available to communicate with people. We also, I think, could expand the use of the Vista Bus Service. I think it's probably more cost-effective than the train. If you look at the cost per passenger mile, bringing people in from Ventura who commute, the bus service is actually much more effective and flexible, because it takes people from where they live to where they work. The train doesn't necessarily connect everybody. Also, in terms of the design, I'd like to see a lot of natural materials used on the overpass, bring in natural stone and wood, as well as the landscaping. It's kind of a mixed bag to see this finally having. I've been working on the freeway project for, gosh, over twelve years, going to Washington and Sacramento a number of times, trying to get money to do all this. And yes, it's going to be disruptive, but I think in the long run, we're going to be better off. I think it's a public safety issue to have good transportation. It's also an economic vitality issue as well. So it's going to be, going to be a bit of a struggle for a while, but I'm sure we'll get through it. Thank you.
Wade?
Thank you. I had the privilege in 2000 to work with Dave Dierflinger. This is before he was the director, city manager. And at that time, I served with him, representing Carpinteria, in our interest in the landscape corridor and also the development of the third lane at that point in time. That didn't go forward. There was funding issues, and so that thing was shelved because of that fact. When it came back the next time, I was asked again, but I had to decline because of conflict of interest. I'm just way too close to where that's what the work in construction is going to do. So based on that, I was quite interested. I followed along with that. And one point of interest to the community, and that is that even though we are looking at the development of this and looking quite seriously at the development of these bridges, Caltrans has yet to even pull a coastal commission permit. What that means is we're looking at between one and two years out before coastal commission will even grant us our permit for that. Knowing that time and that element, we do have some time that we could put things in place. We could be more substantial with those awareness, those notices that go out, because we do have time to build this. Caltrans also, the way they work, they will not close all the lanes along the overpasses. They will develop it where we will have access back and forth. It may be limited. It will definitely be a hardship. However, one thing I think the city should do is make sure that we have pedestrian walkways, bicycle ways specifically in place, along with having a mode of public transportation to get people back and forth on one side from the other. The notices that are going to be posted along the highway corridor, most of those will have to occur before they reach Carpinteria. So we have to have signage put well in place. This may be coming down all the way to the Rincon, possibly even to the Ventura line, to let people know that they have to get off before their normal position. Thank you. Also, the five-lane, this is out of the purview of the question specific, but the Casitas Pass has been developed as a five-lane road. All of these overpasses currently have been funded by a grant that we don't have to pay for. So we were looking at that. It would be to our advantage to put the fifth lane in, even though aesthetically, it's going to be kind of awkward. However, talking to the Public Works Director, I made a suggestion that we could possibly put a center median, a planner in place. So all we would have to do is remove that planner if ever comes a need and time for us to do it, and no cost to reconstruction of a new bridge.
Okay. Thank you. This next question, we're going to go with Kathleen. And the First Fridays began in 2009 to assist local businesses in Carpinteria. Have you attended any of the First Friday events? And what is your opinion of this city and chamber effort to increase economic vitality locally? Can it be improved? And if so, how?
First of all, yes. I have attended the First Friday events, and I think they've been really successful. This is a partnership that I think is very important between the chamber and the city council, and the council, as I was, when I voted to support this, and I think it's very important. As for improvements, I always like to have a lot of fun. So I'm going to say perhaps incorporate street dances. I've gone down south to LA, and they closed off Chinatown and put street dances, and gave their First Friday a more of a party atmosphere for the kids and a block party. I think it would be fun if, and I talked to Matt Roberts a little about this, and we could put down a dance floor and have the kids have something to do in the summer, especially in the tourist, you know, past seven-thirty or eight o'clock at night. I'd like to see it expanded also to maybe incorporate places like the Carpinteria Pool, working with the pool in First Friday, and somehow having an event for that. I think that if we really look at it, something like First Friday can grow into a bigger event, and brings tourists and brings people, and kind of, how can I say, makes us all in a state of happy if we can. And I'm really happy I got to answer this question first, because I like to think that people enjoy themselves and are better with communities, or better in communities when they can enjoy themselves and have fun. So I'm hoping that First Friday will expand, and we'll keep working together with the chamber and on the city council.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred?
Okay. Do I attend First Fridays? Absolutely. Actually, most of the time, I open the visitors' kiosk down there, which is right next to the Seal Fountain. And I have to say that the music and when the kids do the art on the sidewalk with chalk, those kind of things, are really a draw, not just for locals but also for visitors from out of town. Working there at the Host Visitor Center, I do see a lot of increased foot traffic from our local population, as well as a lot of people who come there for the first time, because they're getting information from me at the kiosk. So it seems that First Friday, from my perspective, has worked pretty well. The attendance at local businesses is like the Carpinteria Wine Club. Now, I used to go down there when it first started, and there'd be maybe three or four people in there, and now there's two or three dozen, so obviously, they're doing well. And also, going over to Casitas Plaza, a lot of the shops that are staying open are also seem to be busier than they had been in the past. Restaurants in our downtown tee are quite busy on First Friday, and visitors to the kiosk often tell me that they're really appreciative to have extra hours to shop along that downtown tee business corridor. I think to improve it, possibly, we might advertise, we already advertise in Santa Barbara, but I think it's real possible to advertise down in Ventura and Oxnard for our First Friday and First Saturday. I know a lot of friends of mine from Ventura and Oxnard came up for Avocado Festival and Rods and Roses on the train, because it's an easy way to get there. They can have a good time and then turn around and go home. So I think that would add more foot traffic, both locally and foot traffic from Ventura and Oxnard. Also, I think by expanding our shuttle service, which I had mentioned before, we can increase access to our downtown businesses, be it Casitas Plaza or the downtown tee or towards the Carpinteria Wine Club, and this, again, will draw more local people to it as well as more visitors.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Greg?
Yep. I've attended a number of First Friday events. My business is located about a block from Linden and Carpinteria Avenue, so I have an easy walk down. And I think the First Friday is a wonderful idea and should definitely be expanded. And, you know, one way to advertise things these days is through social media. A lot of the young people now, you know, they've got their little iPhone or, you know, whatever they have, and all day long, they're looking at what their friends are doing. If their friends are talking about these things online, that's what the young people want to do. So we have to be mindful of some of the more modern approaches. But I think, you know, all the things we do downtown, like the Farmer's Market, we expanded that into the Arts and Crafts Festival, or Arts and Crafts wing of the Farmer's Market when I was on council, and, you know, Rods and Roses, the Avocado Festival we just had, all these things are wonderful for our downtown business vitality. But, you know, like I said earlier, wealth starts with dreams. So if we want to have a more local, more vital downtown and a more vital local economy, we have to make sure that we're empowering our local entrepreneurs. And again, education is really key. We've got to have an educated workforce. The news press recently reported that less than thirty percent of our high school kids are proficient in math, you know, and to succeed in the global economy, we've just got to do better than that. And I think we need to form partnerships between our local businesses and our schools, and the city council really should take responsibility for this. So, you know, all those things together are going to work to create a more vital local economy.
Thank you. Wade?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, definitely. I've attended a number of First Fridays. They're great events. Why wouldn't you go to those? It's great to see some of the vitality, some of the businesses opened up. A lot of times, I wouldn't have the opportunity to go there. I wouldn't make the time to go to these businesses, but on a First Friday, it's so easy to do, and it's very inviting. One item I see in the question itself is that, how do I see it with the chamber and with the city itself working together? In my opinion, it's a synergistic partnership. It's something that has to occur. In the past, there has not been, I would say, well, there's been cooperation, but nothing that's gone above and beyond. With Pat Kitzler in place and Kevin Silk working together, I've seen quite a few changes in atmosphere and attitude on how that's going to work out. That's going to be the future of how we could afford to build this community, build the merchandising. I also see that we have the potential to bring in more out-of-town people. Why stop at a First Friday? Why go beyond that? Why not expand to something where we're doing anniversaries, chamber anniversaries, city anniversaries? You guys remember the twentieth one? Tom here did a canoe race. Twenty-fifth one, same thing. Those are great. We shut down the city for anniversaries. Have we had anything since then? No, not really. This is the PR component that we could bring in, to bring more people, to bring more interest into Carpinteria. I had a district conference here for Rotary International. We had seven-hundred guests come in that usually wouldn't come to Carpinteria. Over half of them returned, and they say they will continue to return. This is how we do it. This is how we create interest in the community. This is how we build on our internal economics.
Thank you. You, Wade? Tom?
Yep. First Fridays. Lori and I are always walking down Friday night, and we generally take our stroll through Carpinteria, and we've seen the action and all the activity down there. I would just suggest advertising in our Coastal View, possibly, like Wade said, the Ventura area. And I'm glad that they're successful. And that's the end of that.
Okay. Very good. All right, the next question, we'll start with Fred, and the question is, there's a plan on the works to add a hotel with meeting rooms to be located on the Carpinteria Bluffs. In your opinion, is the hotel something that is needed in Carpinteria? If not, why? And if yes, please explain.
Interesting question. I get the biggie. I love it. Okay. A resort has potential, but it's got to fit in with the character of Carpinteria. View corridors, environmental impacts, resource use, traffic patterns will all have to be studied. If anything is built on Bluffs Three, which is the area they're talking about, it will require a great deal of public input at every step by our city government, from the Architecture Review Board to the Planning Commission to our city council. It'll need to adhere to our general plan and also undergo review by the Coastal Commission. I personally consider public input paramount to my decision-making on anything like this. This area has been zoned for a resort for over thirty years, and we've had several grand proposals made during that time. But any development along our bluffs needs to be studied very carefully. The devil in this case is indeed in the details. A high-end hotel with a restaurant and meeting rooms could be a valuable addition to our local community, and it would generate substantial tax revenue for the city. The jobs created would be a real benefit, provided the wages would allow for the workforce to live within reasonable proximity. I look forward to participating in the discussion of this particular issue.
Good. Thank you, Fred. Greg?
Well, you know, I think this is something that we have to look at very, very carefully, because if something's built there, it's going to be there for a long time and could impact our community positively or negatively, depending on how it's done. You know, I think there are people in Carpinteria who don't want it built at all. They don't want to see anything built at all, and I understand that. And at the same time, if you look at the city's needs for infrastructure, for example, our streets are going to be needing replacement over the next few years, and our Public Works Director estimates we're going to need an additional million dollars per year just to keep our pavement, you know, the streets in front of your house and Carpinteria Avenue and all that. We're going to need an extra million dollars a year. So where's that money going to come from? So if we do do the hotel project, and we do it right, if we mitigate the potential downside, like traffic congestion, if we make sure that the hotel developer provides shuttle service, for example, to and from the downtown, or to the beach, so that we don't end up with a, you know, beach full of cars, maybe it's something that we can do. The hotel bed tax will probably be, you know, several hundred thousand dollars a year of additional revenue to the city, and the city manager doesn't think that there would be much in the way of actual out-of-pocket costs. So economically, and then you look at also the jobs that could be created, the sales tax revenue in addition. And I think if we do the project like that, we've got to make sure that we get a concession so that, for example, senior citizens can have an affordable function up there, you know, because it's going to be an expensive hotel. It's going to be a fancy place, that our senior prom could be held up there at a reasonable price, that our community awards banquet could be held up there. You know, we need to make sure that we have access at reasonable prices for people in the community so that this is something that we, as a community, can go to and can use and be proud of. So I think if we do it the right way, do it very carefully, it is something that could benefit the community.
Thank you, Greg. Wade?
Thank you. On the project of the Bluffs, the hotel project, I've actually seen, this is, I believe, the third rendition I've seen of a project coming forward. And to let the public know, each time a project comes forward, it seems to improve. And when I say improve, awareness is brought from every time we review one of these projects. The first time was off the mic, but I'm going to say it anyways, was kind of a mess. It was pretty, it was too big. It was going to be something that was not going to be Carpinteria. It was just too large, too massive, didn't fit. Well, the next one came through, was a little bit scaled back. This one is scaled back even more. Now, the developer, Jack Timer, is one of the more responsible developers I've seen and worked with. and worked with, he's been very thorough, doing E R R reports, geographical studies, and even constraint reports stating what is going to happen, how we can mitigate certain environmental issues, he's even identified most of the fault lines and created view corridors based on the fault lines he cannot build on. So he's taken the step forward to try and present something to us. We still have plenty of time to review this and make sure that it still fits within our purview. Traffic is one of the issues, impacts, definitely so. This has been left vacant forever, I mean, it's never been developed, and so we have to take a look at how that's going to fit, how the future of that's going to work in the city itself. One advantage we have is that review process, and also, since they're coming in, they want buy-in for us because they're looking at trying to get this thing approved. We have the opportunity now to create a partnership. If they're going to develop this, we have to know for a fact that they are going to have people coming into Carpinteria rather than isolating themselves, because this hotel is a self-sufficient hotel, it's going to have everything from restaurants, housing, retail, it's going to have everything. What's going to draw them into Carpinteria? We may miss that, other than the revenue and the potential, I would say, job opportunities. We want more, I think we deserve more, I think that's going to become part of it. Greg's right, they have to partner up with us, make available those specific facilities they have to help us out too in the city.
Great. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, because the hotel will bring cars into the neighborhood or into Carpinteria, downtown Carpinteria corridor, I have to kind of laugh, it's so Carpinteria. On our question sheet here, we're being asked tonight, we're going to be building a five-lane bridge, and yet Carpinteria may be banning automobiles? So where does the bridge go? Where do the automobiles go? No, I'm against the hotel, as Wade said, he saw three projects come through, and I voted all three times to knock down those projects because I want to keep those bluffs open for the people. As a council member, if I were elected to council, I believe it's my responsibility to do what's best for all of Carpinteria, for what, I've got to put an ear out there, I've got to listen to the yays and the noes, and make an assumption from that as to how I would vote on something like a project. Here in Carpinteria, we need to support the hotels that have meeting rooms. We've got organizations like the Girls' Club, the Boys' Girls' Club, the Women's Club, we've got the Holiday Inn, we've got Best Western, they all have meeting rooms. We need to support these businesses here. You know, if we needed a hotel up on the bluffs, yeah, but I don't think we need a hotel, I think the hotel's just going to benefit somebody else, and I'm against it.
Thank you Tom. Kathleen?
I'm going to quote my grandfather, "Money shines in the blind man's eye." We need to be careful with this resort. Right now, Jack Timer does not own the property, he has entitlements, he's searching, he's hunting, he's fetching. That's a good idea, but I question, do we really need the wealth that some of us dream of? This could easily turn into a nightmare. Be careful what we wish for, citizens of Carpinteria. The hotel could be a valuable asset to Carpinteria and to the local economy. However, the development will require a lot of interpretation, and as I said, Jack Timer is fishing. He doesn't own it, he's looking for entitlements, he said he won't flag it, he's telling us all he'd like to live there, he's a very nice man from Oklahoma, he has a good way of talking, and he's very friendly. But I think we need to be wary of this, oil, and many other things in our community, as we preserve our community, our small town. That's something that as a city council member, I do, and I do it well, and I enjoy doing it. I have, I'm a very strong environmentalist, I have a critical eye on just about everything that happens, that's because I really, really, really feel a passion for this community, a very strong sense of belonging for my children, my children, and their children, and future generations, and all of us to enjoy here. When we look at the development, we want to make sure that we don't look at the bling. However, the development will inquire and require the interpretation of our local planning laws by city staff and city council. I will do that carefully, as your city council person and as a member with the city council. In-depth traffic studies, those will happen. We must weigh the benefit of a resort hotel to the community, the value of preserving passive, open coastal recreational space, public access, environmental impacts, and economic gain. I think that's really important in any project that comes to Carpinteria, freeway, resort hotel, anything that we look at. We can't just look at it as the economic benefit, we have to weigh everything, and that's something that, as your city council member, I will always do.
Thank you Kathleen.
Thank you.
The next question, we're going to go back to Greg, and the question is, what Carpinteria environmental issues are you most concerned about? In your opinion, what can the city council do to alleviate those concerns?
Well, we have a real environmental treasure here in Carpinteria, you know, our quality of life as citizens, the economic vitality, people coming here to see Carpinteria, the food that we grow here, is all dependent on having a really pristine environment. Those of you who've seen the Touring with the Candidates video probably know that I do a lot of organic gardening at home. My home has been on the parade of green building two years in a row as a demonstration project showing sustainability with permaculture and permeable hardscape, and we use worms to eat our kitchen scraps and compost all of our lawn clippings and things to make our own organic fertilizer, and I've got twenty-four different kinds of fruits and vegetables and nuts growing at my house, so those of you who know me know that I'm a very dedicated environmental person. And as I mentioned earlier, the governor appointed me to California's Recreational Trails Committee, so for the last seven years, I've been working all throughout the state to promote trails, which I think are also a very sustainable type of recreation, healthy and non-polluting. As far as here in Carpinteria, you know, I think people have spoken loud and clear on the oil issue, it was two to one, so obviously, the people of Carpinteria do not want to see any expansion of oil drilling in and around Carpinteria. People are very concerned about the possibility of a spill, and I think that as a council, we need to respect the will of the people, and I think the people have spoken loud and clear on oil. I think runoff is actually a concern here in Carpinteria, you know, we have the potential for toxic runoff at any time to get into our groundwater, into our creeks, into our ocean, so I think that's something that we need to be constantly mindful of, and the city does do a comprehensive plan in terms of what's called the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, but we need to be constantly on guard when it comes to toxins being spilled and somehow ending up in our environment. So I think the runoff is probably really my biggest concern at this point.
Thank you. Wade?
Thank you. I break down environmental issues as two parts. First of it has to do with the natural resources we have here. The one main natural resource we have is that Carpinteria is a watershed. That watershed means that everything and anything we do in this area will affect what we do and what we live, how our water's going to be, and how we are going to have to clean up any issues, messes that occur during that time. Watersheds include the beaches, the salt marsh, and creek, and also groundwater. So we have to be aware of practices and put those specific practices in place to make sure that we retain the best practices we could possibly have in place. That may be required going above and beyond what's expected, or what's the average or the norm, but that's something that I believe we have to do. Oil has come up, that seems to be a hot topic for the last few years. In my opinion, I agree with Greg, I think oil, the public has spoken as far as having oil, any type of oil development project done within the city limits, so that's one thing that I would definitely endorse on that. The second part of environment has to do with environmental practices. This is our stewardship, stewardship of how we live and what we're going to leave for our future generations. Styrofoam containers, single-use plastic bags, all of these things definitely had to be done at one point, one time. So these bans, well, even though they happen now, we're having issues from that, this is going to be the way of the future. Unfortunately, we had to put the bans in place, but it's part of the practices that we have to become more aware of as citizens, it's a matter of education. Structures, dwellings, we shouldn't stop there, we go above and well above and beyond that. Building green, irrigation water, doing plants that require a lot less water, every house, create a bioswelle, some sort of way to percolate and keep that, any kind of pollutants that occur on those properties intact in those areas. This is what I see, these are the practices, this is part of the educational component that starts at the city. Thank you.
Great, thank you Wade. Tom?
Yeah, first off, I'd like to say that I believe today that the children, ourselves, and all of America have become alert to the environmental troubles that mankind has caused on the planet. And I believe, and I say this highly, that we have all chosen to take these responsibilities on to protect the environment. I think we're doing a good job at it, and I think that it's a, well, being a surfer all my life and being in the water, I know what kind of things have gone into the ocean, so I think that there's a major awareness out there that the kids are coming around, even the moms and dads today know what is and what's right, and so that, the hotel bluffs, the hotel up on the bluff would be an environmental concern of mine, and also fracking with the oil companies, that's a practice that I'm against.
Thank you Tom. Kathleen?
It was nice to hear someone say that they were against something, get a little tired in the middle of the fence. I am concerned about all the environmental issues, and we as a community, we do enjoy an exceptional quality of life here. We have beautiful oceans, beautiful beaches, you know, it's just probably the most beautiful quintessential beach town in the world. I mean, I have to admit, I travel a lot, and I still travel, and every time I come home, I think, wow, it's great to be here, it really is, it's just a gorgeous town, from the Rincon, you know, all the way up, it's really pretty. We have clean water, clean air, clean streams, clean soils, and clean food, and we enjoy that. Water quality mandates are going to be coming from the state, and we'll have to look at those very seriously in terms of runoff and bioswells, and yes, I believe households will be required at a certain time to have these kind of things by the state and by the water quality boards. We are looking at a whole new generation of cleaning up our water. I just recently saw a movie called Last Call at the Oasis, where it said that water is going to become a very precious commodity, clean water, important for all of us and for all of the future of Carpinteria. We all deserve to keep the small-town tradition of these elements of pure water, clean air, clean streams, clean soils, for future generations. As a very strong advocate for the environment, I will always preserve our right as carpenters, carpentarians, to live long, healthy, and happy lives. And I think that's what's really important here, is we need to look at our environment and how, how does it really enrich in the quality of our lives and help us to stay healthy? And I think a lot of the times, some of the things that we do or don't do can actually affect that health, and we need to really look at those kinds of things seriously. That's part of the environment. The environment's not only the environment health, it's our community's health, it's our community's well-being. I, as a city councilwoman, will always protect the citizens of Carpinteria from any and every enterprise that pollutes our town and our environment. Thank you.
Thank you Kathleen. Fred?
So I believe the three most significant environmental issues are protection of our coastline, our agriculture lands, and our wetlands and creeks. First off, the current bans that the city council has instituted have done a great deal towards protecting our creeks and our ocean. As someone who picks up litter in town, I see a lot less plastic bags, and I see a lot fewer cigarette butts than I did a few years ago when I was doing this, which obviously means they're not getting into our creek streams and on our beaches. City council is able to protect our coast by carefully studying any project on our coastline, whether it's an oil project, something like Measure J, which I fought very strongly against, or something like the resort, we all have, we have to look at these things very carefully as a council, and look at it in terms of its viability for our city and our residents, is this something that fits, that fits the character of our town? We have to look at the long-term impacts, the short-term impacts, we have to look at the revenues, because you're never going to do something, if you're being a good council person, you're not going to do something where the risk is higher than the reward for the city, and when push comes to shove, that's the bottom line. Council has to do what's best for the city and best for its residents. In their mission statement, the Coastal Commission has said that agriculture is the best use of land, so it seems to me that the council already does and can continue to work with the state, the county, and the Coastal Commission to continue to protect our agricultural land with the tax benefits and zoning ordinances that are currently in place. Also, by working with flood control and the other entities or owners of parts of our wetlands, like UCSB owns a part of it, as well as volunteer groups in town, the council can ensure native planting and preservation of species within our wetlands and creeks. We can work with Caltrans to ensure that our wetlands and creeks are protected during the 101 in Motion project. And we also need to push for green building and alternative energy here in Carpinteria to protect our future.
Thank you Fred. This question will be directed to Wade. In your opinion, should Carpinteria join Santa Barbara and be designated as a car-free town? What would you propose to make that happen in Carpinteria?
That sounds good. Car-free, interesting concept and something that I think most of the culture here in Carpinteria has yet to really embrace. I've been around the world, seen areas where they are actually all on bicycles or pedestrians, most of those areas are in Asian countries. What we look at in, when I say car-free, we have first look at our culture, our culture, I hate to say, but it's a car culture, we drive everywhere, I mean, there's probably a handful of us here that actually walked here tonight even. So we have to take a look at how are we going to evaluate this, what it's going to take to put this in place. We have to look at design development specifically and see where the benefits are, because the benefits are quite large, we do have quite a bit of benefit should we become a car-free city. Part of that development is going to take time, we have to look at where we could do these, it would be, I would say, small steps first, finding corridors located in the downtown area where we could do retail outlets or retail sales that have access to pedestrian traffic only. That's one of the ways we could do it. One of the advantages of doing this now is that, is the fact that there are grants available to actually convert us into that way, that mode. One of the other cost-saving factors we have right now, and Greg alluded to this, is that road repairs. I don't know if all of you are this much aware of it, but our city streets, there's about thirty miles of those things, right now, we're looking at maybe in the next five or ten years having to be redone, and we're looking at about an eighty million dollar expense if we have to do that. How we do it, I don't know, we don't have the funds for that, but by going car-free, this will reduce the amount of wear and tear on a daily basis, and something that we may well want to address right now as one of those times, because we are going to be looking at having to pay for this sooner or later, and I think it's a good forward progressive move that we can make in Carpinteria. Thank you.
Thank you Wade. Tom?
Car-free, boy, how do we do that? I could see maybe in the future, after some long-term planning, we might be able to negotiate the downtown area and get the traffic to stop flowing in downtown. Possibly Linden Avenue or portions of Linden Avenue would be acceptable right now, but car-free, I just don't think the city is prepared, where are people going to put their cars? Are we going to have parking lots outside of city limits or in city limits, or where are we going to put these automobiles when people come to visit us? So I'm going to say no.
All right, thank you. Kathleen?
Well, actually, we are probably, I've attended a lot of workshops from Seattle to the East Coast, South Carolina, and seminars, UCLA, done a lot of work with this because it's something I'm very interested in, and carpentarians be proud, we are a car-free community, many, many, many communities are working, and actually probably quite jealous of Carpinteria, because we have everything in place, I really don't see it as being that difficult. A lot of us, we do realize cars are a necessary part of life, I'm not going to say that they're not, but many of us choose to walk or ride a bike all around our city, and I see it all the time, I'm a bicycle rider, so I witness it. I think Carpinteria has one of the most beautiful small towns, and it would be easy to do this, we just need to keep promoting it, and by doing, promoting it, we, you know, we just promote our downtown businesses where everyone knows everyone else, and really, it And really, it doesn't get much better than this. I mean, we have a very good walkable community. I spoke to a couple members of the Santa Barbara City Council, and they tipped their hands. They said, yeah, we're kind of jealous of you guys. You've already got it in place. We've got the scaffolding, if you will, of a car-free community in place. It's not much that we have to do. But we need to do whatever it takes to keep this local feel and to keep the car-free atmosphere of what we have. I think we can increase and enhance the walkable, livable tradition of Carpentaria. We need to look at things like kids being safe to, it's about safety. It's not only about getting out of your cars, it's about creating the infrastructure that everyone would like to get out of their cars, so that it's a joy to do that. And I think we have a lot of the basis of that, and it's not that difficult to do. During the tenure that I've had on council and I will have in the future, we have looked at bike paths and working with Caltrans and creating a bikeway from Santa Claus Village all the way to the Rincon. That's something that'll make us more car-free. They're already in place, these kinds of things, the grants we can get. It's happening. It's not something that's going to be that arduous or difficult, because it makes sense. And it really makes sense here because we've laid the groundwork to be a car-free community. And I worked closely with my colleagues on the council and the staff to get grants and funding and see that this happens, to maintain our streets and our sidewalks and keep Carpentaria as car-free as possible. And I think this will grow. I think it's something that as generationally we develop our infrastructure and put more bike paths and walkways and things like that, Carpentaria can't help but be more car-free than most communities, and it will continue to be so.
Thank you, Kathleen. Fred?
Well, I absolutely believe that we should be designated a car-free town. I agree with Kathleen, we're probably more car-free than most towns, small towns around California are. But to me, it kind of also means the ability to walk, cycle, and more importantly, use public transportation to get around the city. Actually, it's one of my issues in my campaign for city council. Some Measure A funds have already been designated for use for expanding our bike paths and our walking trails, and some has been set aside for mass transit. What I would like to see is Carpentaria expand the walking and biking options for the people within our city, our locals as well as visitors, and really expand our shuttle service throughout the city, from the polo fields to the industrial area. I've met with people at Sandpiper and people up in what we call Legoland here, and they would love to see the shuttle up there to get into town. Right now, it doesn't get there. I would advocate for bus and shuttle service all the way out to Bates Road, so it also helps our people in the industrial section. Wouldn't it be nice to work out there by Bates Road, have your hour for lunch and go into town for lunch and then come back on public transportation? In combination, I think these things would serve the industrial area, our hotels and the residents at the eastern end of Carpentaria, which is something they definitely need. That's what I've heard a lot in the mobile home parks up along, that's part of Carpentaria. And that's about 15% of our population. And it would be nice if they had bus or shuttle access to get into town. To me, the beauty of being a car-free destination is that it not only protects our infrastructure by putting less cars on our streets, but it also makes the city more attractive to our visitors and businesses looking to locate here.
Thank you. Greg?
Well, having served as chairman of California's Recreational Trails Committee, I feel I have a lot of experience in non-motorized recreation. But having said that, you know, I think it's really important not to take away people's rights. And I think what we need to do is we need to give people more choices. We need to make it so that if people want to walk or they want to bike, that they have those options, that they can do those things safely, you know? So to put in more bike lanes, to create a more walkable community, pedestrian refuges, you know, crosswalks, like we put in the senior crosswalk when I was on council to help the seniors get from Shepherd's Place across to Casitas Plaza so that they could walk safely across there. You know, to give people more choices, I think that's the way to go. But I think if we're going to start banning cars, we're going to start taking people's rights away, I think there are a lot of people in the community that will rightfully be very angry about that. So I'm not for banning things, but I am for giving people more options and making sure that, you know, whether you choose to ride a bike, or you want to walk, or you want to take the bus. And I do think that a number of our communities are underserved when it comes to transportation, like our mobile home parks, I think, for example, would be a place where you've got seniors who don't have cars and they need to get to the grocery stores and things. So I think there are appropriate uses for that. So bottom line is, for me, is no, we're not going to ban the car if I can help it. And also, you know, we don't need to be anti-car, because cars have become more energy efficient. They've become safer. We have hybrids, we have electric vehicles, we have very compact vehicles, and technology is constantly evolving and giving us better cars. So I don't think we should be against cars, but we certainly should give people more choices when it comes to their personal transportation.
Great. Thank you. Okay, for the next question, we're going to start with Tom. The City of Carpentaria has decided to raise the Hotel Motel Short Stay Transient Occupancy Tax, TOT, with a measure on the November 6 ballot. What is your opinion about raising this tax from 10% to 12%? Do you think raising the tax will affect tourism visits to Carpentaria? Why? And do you think this increase will assist the City of Carpentaria in providing services for the community, and why?
Yeah, no new taxes.
Okay. That's it?
Short and sweet.
Okay.
Well, I won't be that short. But I just wanted to clarify something. When I spoke with the Santa Barbara City Council members, car-free doesn't mean that we're going to ban or take away people's cars. I just want to make that perfectly clear, that there's no, there's nothing that, you know, in society that would do that, and I don't advocate that. And I don't think any of the car-free, and the sustainable workshops that I've attended and all over the United States have not suggested that. What they've suggested is that you create an atmosphere that is pleasing to walk, bike, and ride public transportation so that it happens. And it does happen. Anyway, back to this question. As a member of the city council, I supported raising TOT from 10 to 12%. I voted with the council to put this measure, Measure E, on the ballot November 6. I don't believe this increase will adversely affect tourism in Carpentaria. In fact, most people won't even notice, as I travel around, I don't notice whether the transient occupancy tax is $2 or $4 or $6. You just pay it, because you enjoy where you are and you realize that it goes back into the community. And I'm, in fact, I believe the increased revenue will hopefully be utilized to support tourism and work with the chamber in ways to increase the number of visitors who vacation and enjoy our wonderful little beach town. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Fred?
Okay, I believe the 2% increase in the transient occupancy tax, I know why they made it TOT, that's hard to get through, brings us in line with surrounding cities like Ventura and Santa Barbara, and I really believe it's necessary for Carpentaria's fiscal stability. While it really will have a minimal effect on our tourism as it amounts to somewhere between $1 or $2 a day, it will help to defray the infrastructure costs to our city and also possibly build back up our city's reserves, which we've had to dip into for the last few years. We have a great public works department here in town. If we were able to add another employer to additional general fund money created by that TOT, it would help move some of our public works projects forward in a more timely manner, which would certainly be good for all of us. Also, by using some of the increased money that would be put into the general fund, the city could work with the Carpentaria Chamber to extend tourist outreach to areas outside our normal advertising borders to enhance our visitor numbers. Let people know in Chicago and Missouri, that wherever, that they can come here, they could take a train and get here. And if we bring more visitors, that's going to grow our tourist dollar, which bottom line only helps our city.
Very good. Thank you. Greg?
Well, I do agree that we do need the revenue, the city needs the money. But I'm concerned that raising the tax is not the best way, and maybe won't even actually result in raising revenue. And it's not a 2% increase, it's a 20% increase. Going from 10% to 12% is a 20% increase in the existing rate. You know, and more and more people now are using online services like hotels.com or Travelocity or whatever to make their reservations. And when people do make their reservations, they see the total price before they hit that button, make, you know, reserve, book that room, they see the total price, including tax. So I don't think you can really successfully argue that nobody's going to notice. I think people do notice. And I think this will hurt small business. I think when you take money out of the pocket of the tourist and you give more of it to government, that's less money that the tourist then has to spend in our local businesses. And we've been talking a lot about local business vitality here. So I think this is going to be counterproductive. You know, it's not, it's just something where there are better approaches, in my view, that we ought to be putting our time and energy into other ways to create economic vitality. This is not the best way, in my view. So I personally am going to vote against it. You know, I realize other people might vote for it, it's not a huge issue for me, but personally, I plan to vote no on the tax increase. You know, taxes are high enough, we can't just keep raising taxes at every opportunity. And the unincorporated areas, for example, Summerlin and Montecito, they'll still be at 10%. Just because the City of Santa Barbara is at 12%, doesn't mean, and we go to 12%, doesn't mean that there isn't any other competition. You know, there's Ventura, just a few minutes away. And a lot of convention planners do look very carefully at the rate, including tax, when they're making a decision of should they bring their convention to a Carpentaria-area hotel, or should they take it to Montecito or Summerlin or Ventura? They look at the bottom line. So I think the consumers are getting more and more sophisticated, especially with the online resources that they have available to them, to research all this in advance and make their decisions based on the bottom line.
Thank you, Greg. Wade?
Concerns I have, and looking at both sides of the TOT, that would be going either for or against it. The pro side of it is definitely, you will get revenues generated into the general fund. General fund, by the way, because if you put on the ballot, you put it into general fund, majority then would be enough to pass the measure. If you go beyond that and you want to have it specific to any type of line item or specific restricted fund, then you would have to have beyond that. So it would go into general fund, so it doesn't tell us exactly where this tax is going to go actually anyways. And also true is that most people will probably not even notice that you're going from 10 to 12%. Those are the pros. Against it, what's going to happen? Will, in fact, we end up with fewer tourists that ends up balancing it out or compensating it? That I don't know for sure. Is the value of it, because we looked at this in part of the study, as compared to Santa Barbara? Now, Santa Barbara has different amenities. It has different conveniences. And then in Carpentaria, are we seeking that same crowd? Is that the crowd that we want to attract into Carpentaria? We have to look at both of those and weigh those out. Currently, I'm undecided, only because I want to hear more about the side that's against it, the side that would say, you know what, is it going to be counterproductive? Are we actually going to end up reducing the amount of tourists coming here or not? I don't know that fact, and that's what I need to find out.
Thank you, Wade. And now, for our last question, we're going to start with Kathleen. And what ideas do you have which would help the city fill the commercial vacancies in Carpentaria? What type of businesses do you see coming to Carpentaria in the future?
Well, I think Lynda.com is a good example of the kind of businesses that need to locate in Carpentaria. That business has come here and welcomed Carpentaria, working with the chamber, and it is a business that I believe, you know, doesn't environmentally pollute our town. And I think it's a very, what you would say, win-win situation. As far as, so those would be the kinds of businesses that I think we need to attract. We also need to attract more small business in our downtown area. I'm very concerned about that. I think one of the ways to do this is, one of the things that I've noticed a lot of cities do is they have a sister city. We don't have a sister city in Carpentaria. That might be a good way to do it. Most of the cities that I've noticed in California are adapting sister cities in China because it's been studied that a lot of Chinese people spend a lot of tourist dollars in California, believe it or not, quite a large amount. So that might be one way. I think we also need to work with national, local, and international realtors as much as we can to show our commercial buildings, this is, in more venues, utilizing internet marketing. And we're doing that. We're improving our technology, we're working with the chamber. And in fact, the city council now, we have two members that are working with the chamber. This was again, another committee that happened while I was on the council. I'm very happy with that, because I think that's something that will increase the business, the, how can I say? It'll help increase the business environment in Carpentaria in a way that makes sense for the city without a lot of red tape. Another is to have events in our open spaces. I recently attended the Community Environmental Council's Green Gala at the Armory. And while I was sitting there, I thought, gee, it's the Armory, they could have this just about anywhere. You could have it in a vacant commercial space out on Mark Avenue. I mean, what would be the problem with that? We need to invite groups to utilize our commercial space for art openings, weddings, and community events. The City of Glendale, all of their vacant buildings downtown, they put art, really nice art of various artists in the area. And I've done a couple stories on art, public art in downtowns, and it helps decrease blight, it gets more people interested in the buildings, it does a lot of things that help a more prosperous economy in the city. The City of Glendale is very successful, by the way. They have rented more spaces since they put that art in the public spaces in their downtown area than in this year than they had in the last four years. So that's a pretty good track record. As a city, I think we should target and market our vacant commercial space. As I said, we could also have Lynda.com and other people that have really enjoyed moving to Carpentaria with their commercial space, do 30-second spots on the internet to get out the word, and then market those internationally and nationally. I think the real answer here is being very selective and widely promotional with our commercial space. And that's it. Thank you.
Kathleen? Fred?
I strongly advocate for aggressive outreach to tech and green industries to bring resource-neutral business to our industrial component, especially now that UCSB has become a science and tech center. Our mom-and-pop downtown core can be marketed as a day or overnight destination for senior club excursion and cruise liners coming into Santa Barbara. I was surprised to learn my daughter-in-law actually works for the Santa Barbara Convention and Visitors Bureau, and informed me that vacationers on cruise ships typically, when they go ashore, spend about $200 a day. Wow. By highlighting use of Amtrak and inviting bus trips to Carpentaria, maybe we could bring some of these travelers into our downtown for antique and local retail shopping. And when owners of the vacant properties in our downtown core see these increased visits, they'll see a quantifiable reason for searching out businesses to fill their vacancies in their property. In the future, I believe we will have more information-oriented businesses, large and small, from tech startups to small retail, locate here in Carpentaria.
Thank you, Fred. Greg?
Well, you know, we need to be more business-friendly, not just talk about being business-friendly, but actually be business-friendly. And I think these bans and things that we've, you know, we've gotten a bit of a reputation for being a little heavy-handed when it comes to some of these programs that we put into place, and, you know, that we've just done it too hurriedly, we haven't listened closely enough to small business, we haven't gone slow enough to where we could actually hear what small business has been saying. So, you know, to the extent where we've gotten a reputation for doing that, I think that works against us. So we need to be more careful about how we make progress on things that the community cares about without actually, you know, earning a reputation for being unfriendly to business. Infrastructure, as I said earlier, is very, very important. Businesses want to come to a community that has good infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, flood control, stable electricity. I mean, you know, how many times has our power gone out here? When we have windy weather, wet, stormy weather. I was without electricity for three days several years ago during tax season, had to go out and buy a generator. You know, those kinds of things. I mean, you want stable electricity. It sounds funny, but I mean, these are things that businesses look at. High-speed internet, you know, we want to have super-fast internet, the best internet that we can possibly get here for Carpentaria, that's part of our infrastructure. And we need to make sure that our building standards, our development standards are clear and are accessible, so that if somebody is thinking of coming to Carpentaria, they understand our standards. You know, we don't want anything that's built too high, we don't want anything that's going to pollute, we don't want anything that's going to threaten our environment. We like to have the mom-and-pop local shops, you know? So we, of course, we have to have standards, they need to be very clear and accessible. And we need to try to reduce the amount of uncertainty in the process, because if you're an entrepreneur and you're thinking of investing in the community, you need to have some idea of how much it's going to cost, how long it's going to take, and ultimately, you know what you can and cannot do in Carpentaria. So I think those are the things that we need to do to try to fill some of these vacant spaces.
Thank you. Wade?
Commercial vacancies, as in the rest of the world, actually, there's been quite a bit of vacancies because of the current economic times. a bit of vacancies because of the current economic times. Kevin Silk, one of the staff members for the city, he's, I talked to him, and he is very active in advertising along with the chamber, trying to match up those groups, the people that need a place and those people that have a place that they need to rent. Soliciting through commercial brokers is one of the areas that they're using, and I think that's definitely wise. You can go worldwide. You have a larger market to draw from. One of the other points that the city's working on right now is actually having packets, information packets, for those businesses that are interested in coming to the area actually have informationals, what it's going to take, how to get involved, what are the processes, and what are the potential issues that they're going to run into as they start developing these project sites. Tyco is another company that's going to be leaving in 2013. What are we going to put in that place? Right now, the city, believe it or not, and the chamber are soliciting to see if there is somebody that's actually interested in that. So, we're hoping to have less downtime, I would say, on vacancies. Hardware Store, there's another one that's been vacant for, you know, for quite a while. Why? We just haven't found a partner for that. We need to answer the questions, what's going on with those. Some of the successes, the Old Water Department actually became a computer-animated movie studio. I mean, they found us. That was one of the things. They came to the community, loved Carpinteria, and they moved here because they said this is where they want to be. Sly's Restaurant is another one, been very successful. S&amp;S Seeds, that was vacant for a number of years, and now they found a use for that, creating tax revenues for us. Lavender Court, Palm Avenue Project, both of those are multi-use units. They include a housing component, and that is one of the other areas we have. People that want to work here, how are they going to afford to live here? Well, if you have a mixed-use development, that makes it more affordable, makes it actually better for beach communities because most of the small communities actually have that set in place. We are now doing that, and I think that is a good progressive forward effect we have. Making the city easier. In other words, how are we going to work? Are the sidewalks in place? Bike paths, shuttles going east and west? Are we bringing in the people from the industrial park out at Cindy and Rose into the city? Do they have access, or do they have to drive this on their own? The answer is, right now, they're on their own to get into the city. Why? I mean, that's another revenue gathering component that we do have. The city, the chamber, need to partner together. My reasoning for that is that there becomes a balance of interest. You have the chamber on one side and the city both working together to try and create these business opportunities for people and businesses to come in. Thank you. Also, along with that same line, having the two work together, you now have a PR component that's going to be balanced. You will have a city working along with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that's going to be one of the important components for that, and it's good to see a better cooperation of the two entities working together.
Great. Thank you, Wade. Tom?
Yeah. I believe what the city, how the city could benefit is by, I don't know if anybody saw my "Let's Meet the Candidate" video, but I'd like to see Carpinteria connect with Santa Claus Lane or Via Real. And I can only imagine, from Linden North, if we had access to the freeway, I don't understand Carpinteria having a dead end. Carpinteria Avenue is a Pacific Coast Highway, and why it dead-ends at the other end of town? And the other end of town, that's a good chunk of real estate. That's a lot of property there. I think that, I think the real estate value, if we opened up Carpinteria Avenue to access to the freeway, I think all of that area would become prime A1 Pacific Coast Highway, beach community property. Shops will come in, businesses will be built. By the way, I'm new at being a politician, and I do have to flip-flop from my video that I shot. I said I'm against all development, a no-growth guy. Well, I actually do support business, and I do support possible projects along Carpinteria Avenue that benefit the town and make the downtown corridor stronger. And so, that's part of my problem and the fight that I'm in with these two bridges that Caltrans and SEG are funding these bridges was to alleviate traffic problems in Carpinteria. And I know that, just from driving the coast of California my entire life, if you're on the PCH, you go into town and you go out of town. The freeway project, they're going to expand Via Real, and it's going to come down, this is on the other side of the freeway now. Via Real, they're going to expand it, it's going to dead-end at Linden. Carpinteria Avenue, dead-ends. We've got two dead-ends in our town, no connection to the freeway. I find that very frustrating, and I say that we need to connect Carpinteria Avenue with Santa Claus Lane.
Great. Thank you, Tom. So, right now, go ahead.
I just want to thank Tom Legere. If you'd all give him a hand, he did a heck of a job. Thank you so much, Tom. And thanks to everyone sitting at the tables. You guys did a great job, great candidates. How in the world are we going to choose? I don't know. I just want to dismiss the candidates so that they can mingle with the folks that came. And I know that there's some burning questions out there. I can just see them, and they've got a candidate they want to talk to.
We're not doing, are we doing a closing?
It's 7:30. We have to be out of here by 8:00, and we want to have a little time, if we could please, for refreshments.